Good evening and welcome to the May night Select Board meeting in advance of town meeting at seven o'clock. It is official time here. I want you to meet in order at six oh three. So we'll start as usual with opening remarks, announcement, and agenda review. Is there anything on the agenda that anyone needs to mention, amend, or otherwise? Are there any announcements anyone needs to make? And if not, then I think we're headed right into our agenda. And so first up is under our action discussion items, our Public Art Commission. We have built the utility art project and a draft policy on some one of these. So I still have one of your Mr. [inaudible].
Yes.
If you want to share with us about that.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Amy Crawley, who's heading up the utility box project, to introduce that and herself.
I'm Amy Crawley, member of Public Art Commission. In January, the Public Art Commission received a local cultural council grant for a project titled "Enlivening Public Spaces." This project is designed to further the presence of public art in downtown Amherst and the Amherst Center Cultural District by inviting local artists to create unique and colorful paintings on three designated utility boxes on North Pleasant Street. This will be achieved through a public call for artists and subsequent jury process. The jury will include two Public Art Commission members, one or two abutters to the utility boxes, and one or two local artists. Following a series of press releases about the project, the painting of the utility boxes will take place in mid-September, and the public will be invited to watch the artist-painter creations. Prior to painting the boxes, the three winning artists will be responsible for cleaning and preparing the utility boxes following DPW guidelines. Precedence for the painting of utility boxes exists in Amherst, the scene of the Emmeline Dickinson utility box located at the corner of Main Street and Dickinson near Hope and Feathers Framing. Additionally, painted utility boxes enhance the downtown landscape and can be effective in decreasing the incidence of graffiti. The three town-owned utility boxes that we've chosen are located in front of Subway, one near St. Bridget's Church, and one in front of Brueger's Bagels. Currently, one of boxes tagged with assorted graffiti, and one has been used to display flyers and announcements that must be frequently removed. So imagine instead, three colorful designs on these boxes. This project is designed to encourage community engagement, to contribute to the vitality and attractiveness of our streetscape, and to further enhance the Amherst Center Cultural District. Similar projects have also been successfully completed in Northampton, Greenfield's Downtown Crossroads Cultural District, and Springfield Central Cultural District. And if in the future, the appearance of the artist creation deteriorates due to weather or other damage, the town of Amherst has the right to paint over the design without notification to the artist. The Public Art Commission has met with and received support of this project from the DPW and the Design Review Board. And we're happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Did you want to add anything to what she's -- okay. Mr. [inaudible].
Since I haven't ever attended your recent meetings, one question. I gather from the description, these would be permanent and not rotating designs. In other words, you wouldn't have a set of designs and then a new contest of new designs?
Not for those three unless there was, you know, excessive damage. We could run another call for artists and have that redone. Or alternatively, in the future, expand to other boxes in town.
Yeah, I was just wondering because, I mean, you've got obviously a wide range of possible topics, and I was thinking, for example, that 2019 is the centennial of the Jones Library, and they're playing various things to promote the culture of the book, the history of writing in Amherst, window displays and so forth. There's also going to be a major international conference of scholars of the book, history and art of the book community, U.S., in summer of 2019. So I'm sure they'd be delighted to see things of that sort. That's a lot of possibility.
Great, thank you.
Mr. [inaudible].
My question, and forgive me if you mentioned it and I just didn't get it, is there remuneration to the artist who's chosen, or are the materials paid for? The Public Art Commission, how does the money part work if there isn't any money?
So the grant that we've received will allow us to have a stipend of $350 for the winning artist, and they will receive that once they've submitted invoice to the commission, and then we will -- the grant is given after the fact, so then we would submit the invoice to get the money, and then reimburse the artist.
If I could just follow up on that one piece. But they would pay for all the materials?
We're hoping to get something, some items donated, or through a gift certificate, and then other items.
And just on that thing of the, for the money, do they get to sign their name? I mean, is there sort of a marketing benefit to that artist, or is it just the $350?
I would say they are going to be announced in publication through the ZEP or our line. There is precedent for the artist to put their name on the box itself, and then any pictures that they take of that kind of parts go onto their website or their report.
Thank you.
Mr. [inaudible].
I have a question, actually, from Mr. [inaudible]. Are these boxes in the public way, and will it require separate action from the Select Board if they are in the public way to authorize this use?
They are in the public way, so it would require action in some way.
So are you the separate meeting will need a motion, or make one tonight?
Yes. Okay. So I'm going to follow up on that question because the only thing that occurred to me is, who actually owns these boxes? Are they owned by the utility company, or are they owned by the town? And if they're owned by the utility company, have we reached out to them to get an okay from them?
From the DPW, there are town-owned boxes.
Okay.
Mr. [inaudible] discussion. So if it comes back for, at the actual approval of the painting of, like so many things, does that mean we see a picture of what will go on there? I mean, I don't want to be like the art review group, but would we actually be approving a specific image, or would we just be approving the use?
I don't know. I mean, there is one already, the Dickinson, I'm not sure how.
We don't know how it got there. The Dark of Night.
It's beautiful, but I think that you would say, yes, you can do it and delegate to the Public Art Commission to make the decision.
Give them the authority to make.
If you want to be in that business, honestly.
Give them that authority in that one, whatever, the motion.
Mr. [inaudible].
So a couple of follow-up questions along those same lines. One is that it's simply that we could have had that motion on our motion sheet tonight, and we don't, because I was wondering why we were looking at this at all in terms of our agenda, given that we don't have a motion to do the public way. And so I feel like we're adequately prepared for somebody to make up such a motion so that it doesn't have to come back, because we are not the arbiters of what art will be done on. But so that issue aside, so thank you for trying to address that. Another is, actually, two other questions. One is associated with the specific businesses that they were near were mentioned. If I could hear a little bit more about any reaction those businesses have had to this. And then also, my third question was relating back to the information in the application summary and what was just stated in terms of stipend of $350 plus material. So the intention, I believe, was that, and has was indicated on the timeline and was said, is that the materials would be donated, but if they weren't adequately donated, that somehow those would still be paid for out of the grant in addition to the $350, just to clarify those issues. As in, as opposed to, you get what you get from the donations, perhaps there would be additional things that would be needed. So I don't know. I want to clear on that.
The abutters, we're waiting till we present, I presented to the Select Board to move forward in alerting them that we were going to move forward with this project. And to your question about the stipend, should, as you said, we not receive adequate donations, then the artist would be responsible for purchasing extra materials, and those receipts come to us for, as part of their invoice, so they would be awarded. And that $350 would cover that.
So if I could follow up then, thank you. That's very clear. And so since, I understand the process that you undertook in terms of not talking to the abutters till you found out. We said it was a crazy idea, even though we've already gotten the grant, so it would be too bad if we decided it was a crazy idea. So there are chicken egg questions here, but beyond that, given that we don't have that reaction, then maybe that would be a reason not to make up the motion tonight in terms of future, in terms of public way.
Mr. [inaudible]. I mean, I appreciate that concern, but the abutters don't have a say in this. I mean, if there are DPW boxes, the town does what it does, and inform the abutters as if, to require, to receive some input. I mean, I'm not sure what the abutters are going to say about that.
Mr. [inaudible].
Yeah, I mean, I did think about this in regards to, for example, St. Bridget's Church, which is one of the locations, and if there was choice of art for that box that seemed in any way disturbing to leadership at the church, that you would hope that that would be considered, at least. And I think it's a difficult question, because it has to do with the actual choice of the art, much as the choice to paint artwork on the box.
We are also extend, you know, we're extending to the abutters the opportunity to be part of the jury as well.
Mr. [inaudible].
I mean, last I checked, it's still a public place ruled by secular law, and I would assume that the people we appointed to commissions use good judgment, so it's nice to be concerned about these things, but I think we can also get concerned about things that are not really likely eventualities.
Other questions?
This is going to be really brief, because we're going to drag this up, but the abutters should, so one is in front of St. Bridget's on North Pleasant, and the other one?
So where Subway Restaurant is, right there on that corner.
Oh, okay.
It's St. Bridget's, it's right where the light is, if there's an intersection, and in front of Brueger's.
Okay. So with the abutters, when you say the abutters, you said there are two slots for abutters on the committee. There's three locations, and one might guess some of those locations. There's, you know, the next door store or whatever, so you'll not, you'll talk to all of them, but oh, there's only, there's two slots on the selection committee for the abutters.
Mr. [inaudible]. If you were offering a motion, it seems like you were crafting.
Well, I was crafting a motion, and I will read what I wrote, and then if Mr. [inaudible] suggests that we hold offering the motion until he has a chance to consult others, then I'm not going to make it actually as a motion, but it would be along the lines of, motion to authorize the painting of public art on three utility boxes on North Pleasant Street, one each near to Subway Restaurants, St. Bridget's Church, and Brueger's Bagels, with the approval of design by the Public Art Commission.
Are you waiting for reading?
Yeah, I'll read it.
Second.
Then I will make that as a motion, and I will give it to you.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? So that's unanimous.
I will give it to you at the end.
All right. So the other topic, as we're here about, is policy regarding public installations by private developers.
Okay. I'm Eric Brody, and I'm Chair of the Public Art Commission, and this is an idea that we have been developing for some time, even before Percent for Art was passed. Members of the Commission, namely myself and Renee Tiberich, were talking to the archipelago developers about art at their projects that they've been developing in town. And while they were receptive, nothing, you know, concrete came of those discussions. I think largely because we didn't have any leverage then, because the town wasn't doing anything about public art in its own buildings. But since the passage of the bylaw for Percent for Art by 71 percent in town, it became clear that now the town will be putting public art in its major construction projects and renovation capital improvement projects. And we're in a better position, I think, now to approach developers, because, you know, we're basically putting our own money where our mouth is on the subject. So the idea is, different communities have dealt with private developers in different ways. Some communities mandate through a Percent for Art program that private developers participate in that program as well. We felt that would not be appropriate for Amherst to do at this point, that it would be onerous, there's not enough commercial development that we would want to put that at risk. But we did feel that we should encourage private developers to consider and include, where at all possible, some kind of public art in their own projects. Now, we've got two that Archipelago has already erected, and they're planning a third on Spring Street, and we're hoping that we can talk to them with a little more authority about including art in some of them. Now, I've learned from Chris Bestrop that when they made their proposals to these projects, they did include public art as part of the projects, which haven't yet appeared, including on the one on the corner next to Bertucci's. At Triangle Street, there was in their brochure a lovely sculpture of a statue that they had just photocopied from an Oregon artist that put there for promotional purposes, and they said they intended to do something like that. Now, that might have been on the public way, so the policy itself here deals with art that could be on totally private property, but also art that is on the public way, because they should be treated differently, or would be treated differently, as the town would have more of an investment than anything on the public way. So we decided to take the approach of trying to encourage developers, particularly if the town is offering any kind of incentives for them, or they're getting incentives from the town, as you said, to put up their billings. In return, we think it only fair and reasonable to ask them for something in return, specifically public art. It's clear now that the town is interested in this, is supportive of it. So we talked about what, how should this be formalized? And we took it to the planning board first, and not knowing whether it should be a policy from the Select Board, or, you know, this is sort of new territory for all of us. But through the discussions with the planning board, and later with the Design Review Board, it seemed like a policy from the Select Board seemed to be the most appropriate way to deal with the question, which is why we're here this evening, and hoping that you agree. But if there are, if there are other ways that this should be handled, you know, we are, of course, open to anything that works for the town. The planning board was interested in it. They had very minor changes to this document. Design Review Board had a couple of tweaks they wanted to make. All those have been incorporated into the proposed policy that you had before you. So we're here to talk about, if this makes sense for Amherst, and if this is the way to handle it, we are anxious to get your views on it, and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions?
I'm sure somebody's got some.
Well, it's like Mr. [inaudible] and other people.
Well, I mean, I just have a question that we will just point out, we do need to consider whether it's consistent with Charter Section 10.7b for us to take any action on it before the new council is seated. And that's a determination that we will need to make. So I think that any further conversation we have probably needs to be with that thrown out there as something that we will have to consider before we do anything other than to stem our thoughts.
So thank you for saying that, because one of us was going to say that first. And the other part was, that I'm wondering about, is if this doesn't pass, and action needs to be taken, and we are proceeding on building a building prior to any such policy existing, whether Select Board or Town Council, because if we put it off, and based on the Charter Transition provisions, and Town Council isn't able to take it up right away, but we do eventually, given the process of building a building, I guess I'm looking for the town manager's opinion on what happens, given the bylaw that, of course, hasn't actually gone through the special legislation yet, but assuming it eventually does, how, how these things will be dealt with if this doesn't exist? Will you just consider this advisory, or what will you do?
So I think this applies to private developers, so it's different than the bylaw that was passed by town meeting, and so I think this would be advisory to private developers. And I think that in terms of, since the bylaw hasn't been acted on, or the special legislation hasn't been acted on by legislature yet, the public art piece, that, there are no projects in waiting to happen, or putting the, you know, to get started, and there's not, there's no funding to start any at this moment in time, there won't be until the council, the town council takes office. I think there's, timing isn't an issue. This is something for private developers, and I think Public Art Commission and others can advocate when they go through the permitting process to say, we'd like you to incorporate public art, you're doing a major building in the town center of town, we think you should incorporate this as part of your, and if they say they're willing to do it, get it written into their permit that they guarantee the building.
So to my point, and Mr. [inaudible] just expressed it, I think, someone showing it in a rendering, and you're assuming it's part of a project, but if not literally that piece of art, it should be written into the, as a condition of the permit, of the permitting authority. But the part where I am having a problem is where it says, if as part of that discussion, the town offers concessions, for example, in the way of requested modifications or waivers in order to obtain artwork that otherwise would not be included. So I have trouble trading waivers for art. We have a specific bylaw that does change some density calculations when there's an inclusion of affordable housing. It's codified in the zoning bylaw. But the reason we have requirements is because they're good requirements. If we could just waive them when we got something we wanted, why would we have that requirement in the first place? So it makes it sound like the modifications or the waivers are something that wasn't important to the building, but, and we'll trade that for art, because art, you know, is clearly important to us. Well, there's, I've seen things where it's trade your zoning requirements for energy conservation. I mean, there's a whole list of different worthy causes that have been suggested in other communities or here as an offset to some of the zoning requirements. But I wouldn't want that reworded, where a conversation with a private developer in a discretionary permit, where they're saying, these are some of the public benefits, including this piece of public art, could mean something, but to trade a part of the zoning requirement for the art, which maybe isn't what you meant, but it's kind of implied here, that's foreign harm.
Mr. [inaudible]. I'm not sure, I may know where that came from, because I chaired the working group that did the natural and cultural resources section of the master plan, and so if you look at NC 2G, it says, provide incentive to building owners to increase space for locally-produced public art and performances, and it talks about public acknowledgement, density bonuses, opening or extensions. This is, of course, just our consultants going nuts in a wish list fantasy world of everything in the kitchen sink. So there is, it is written there, and I think those were meant to stimulate thought, but I think that, as Ms. [inaudible] points out, it might be difficult to achieve in practice. But yet, the principle of encouraging public art by private developers and providing incentives is mentioned there, the idea of revolving fund probably makes more sense if we could accumulate money that could be distributed as an incentive to the developers. And then just a footnote, I agree with the point about the rendering of a building with a piece of art, nothing guaranteed. If I recall from the hearings of the planning board, the Spring Street project was going to include some kind of art, either art on the grounds and sculpture, or gallery space down below. There's some vague talk of taking art from Amherst College and displaying it in this downstairs area. So that's one possibility there. And then as far as the one is pleasant, of course, the developers are, you know, there's a mural there that was created by the town and funded by private donations, and the developers are paying the artist fairly nicely to reproduce that mural. And they talked also about doing something in the way of public art or wave finding to direct people from the street back to the cemetery, because it's hidden behind the gas stations and the shops and so forth. So those are at least two things that they have in mind. But I agree, obviously, agreement or some kind of incentive is better than just vague wishes.
Mr. [inaudible].
So I'm finding some difficulty just in following this document in general, and so maybe somebody can help me out in a couple of areas. One is where it says, it is the policy of the town to make this under private developer projects head. It said, "Policy of the town of Amherst to encourage private developers to include significant art." I don't think that is written anywhere unless it's in our public Percent for Art.
This is the policy.
If this is the policy that says that, but, but I'm uncomfortable with inserting that in there as kind of a third point, as opposed to an actual, I'm not, I don't know why it's listed there, I'm just finding the whole thing very difficult to follow, and obviously, planning board and design review board didn't have the same problem that I am having. On the reverse, it says, "Project art on public property." I'm not understanding how we get from here and here. So we asked private developers to put art on their property, and then they decided they want to put it on public property, but there's, in the public way, then there's a whole other set of issues that aren't, that I'm having trouble understanding where our decision-making, like about three simple electrical, utility boxes, is versus some giant sculpture that's getting put on the public way, associated with private development, and where there's this long list of things that are happening five points here, but I'm having a hard time understanding where the equivalent of the Select Board comes into that conversation with public way. And so I'm just not really grasping as to how we're getting from point A to point B. So one of my colleagues, knowing how my brain works better than Public Art Commission does, wants to try and explain this to me from the standpoint of the public way. I mean, I can read the words that are in front of me, but I'm not grasping how we get from one point to another.
Can I just make one comment on that? That's, that's in there because the archipelago team informed us that that proposed sculpture that was in the brochure would have been on the public way, if they had in fact erected it. So it could happen in other, I don't know what projects are becoming down the line with future developers, but it's conceivable that there would be something that would be on the public way that was part of the project, or that could be part of the project. And all this tries to do is address that contingency, if there were public art that were proposed to be on the public way, like that sculpture outside of that first building. This provides protocol on how to deal with it. How, how should the town deal with it? Should it have any say at all? And our view is that, yes, since it's on the public way, the town should have more of a say in what that art is, and how it's handled and maintained.
My sense is, I mean, I'm sympathetic to this, my sense is, we're not really ready to take any action on this, especially, you know, if you abbreviate that meeting and schedule it out before the town meeting, so I think we might need to come back to this, study it further, and discuss it further. If that, if you can.
But I'm not sure it's going to help, because there, I'm missing the part where someone is, where a private developer is compelled to provide public art at all. And so if they're compelled And so if they're compelled to do so and they can't do it on their property, then file an, but I don't understand why they would ever be compelled to do so, because they're a private developer, so who would compel them to do so?
I think that gets back to Ms. Kruger's point about, you know, sort of, you know, earlier paragraph on the front side where the town is offering concessions, and this is a stipulation of those, you know, as part of, that goes along with those things. So if we allow a certain waiver, you know, sort of a piece that they can offer to compensate for that would be a piece of art as opposed to something else. I think that's sort of how we get there, but I don't know, I'm sure it's articulated as cleanly as it needs to be for that purpose, to sort of tie those together. I mean, obviously with language broad, so it can be functional and allow for, you know, discretion interpretation, but at the same time, it may not be quite, fit together quite as tightly as it needs to, to make that functional, I guess.
Yeah, the policy doesn't compel at all. It, it addresses what happens, for example, if, out of the goodness of their heart, they want to put a piece of sculpture on the public way. How do we handle that? There is no policy or protocol for that right now. So we are just trying to get ahead of the curve here in case that happened. And I'm reminded, and I'm sure you know, what happened when an artist volunteered a gift to North Hampton's Pulaski Park and they didn't have a gift policy to receive it, they ended up rejecting it because they didn't have a protocol to deal with public art. It's actually, to my mind, a beautiful sculpture, but they weren't prepared. So that's something we don't have either, and that's next on our list also to consider. What happens if that happens here? Someone volunteers, you know, a significant piece of public art, how do we deal with that? We don't have a policy about that, and we should, and we'll probably be drafting that as well. If this is the forum, the Select Board or, I can't speak for what the city council would be, but currently the forum for this kind of a document or policy to exist in or be a function of.
Sort of thinking back about the transition questions Mr. Steinberg raised and Mr. Bachmann answered, so if this is guidance or suggestion to a private developer, that's one thing, but if it's policy to a governing body of how to handle that with a private, it seems that we are venturing into the transition zone in a way that would say, "Hey, you know, city council's Select Board on May 9th, 2018, created this policy, so that's the one you're going to follow until you change it."
But along those same lines, I'm not, although I was working through the idea of this just being the principles by which the Public Art Commission works and says, "These are the kinds of things we'll take with us when we go to the hearings. This is the kind of thing we are looking for, and we will advocate back to what Mr. Bachmann said. We will advocate for these things because as a public art commission, these are the things we develop based on our expertise, based on the experiences of other communities." However, to say that it's even our policy or even their policy, I think is the same transition problem, because it's not just the Select Board that isn't supposed to be doing the things, it's everybody that's not supposed to be doing the things. But guidelines, I feel a little, you know, more easy about, these are our ideas that we've worked hard to come to a common consensus around, as opposed to we've created a new policy in this particular transition.
So, I think, Mr. Brody, one of the things he suggested was, what if something happens? Someone comes up with a significant piece of art they'd like to donate to the town? What's our process? Maybe not policy, what's our process? I think that's a totally legitimate thing to lay out, like today, here's our process, because we'd have to think that through. We want to do that in advance, or someone saying, "We'd like to put a piece of art on Kendrick Park or someplace else." What is our process for that? And we, it's probably wise to lay that out, who would be involved in the decision, how did the decision be made? It might not be able to be, decision might not be able to be made, depending on the scale of things, but, but at least everybody would be on board with, what's that path look like?
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that was easy to come to the conclusion we did about the painting of boxes that were already there, but constructing something new, placing something new in the public way, and then using space possibly impeding traffic, foot traffic or vehicular traffic, a whole bunch of issues that would have to be considered on a case-by-case basis, it's sort of difficult to deal with that in advance. And I'm also cognizant of the analogy to proposal in the Business Improvement District to put a ban stand on the common. And that has not been an easy process either, because it involves both use of space on the common, both enhancing and affecting possibly negatively the use of the common, we don't know, but we see the design. And it's just a difficult issue. It's not one that I feel comfortable with fly making a policy statement on, and then I'm kind of left with back to the transition provision in addition.
So I will suggest, I think we're happy to offer lots of commentary on this, as you've already experienced, but I think as far as formally adopting it as policy, or I think even maybe even as guidelines, because it's a significantly new thing, that's not to say we don't need them. I think that's, you know, your point is well taken, that in absence of policy, then we're, if someone offers a piece of art, or whether it be building construction or just an artist wanting to offer a piece of art to the town, we're going to be stuck, because we won't have something. But, you know, I think that, I think it's difficult for us to take formal action on this anytime in the next several months, but at the same time, I guess we shouldn't work through some of this to sort of prepare it for the council, because I think that'll be even more appropriate for them to adopt policy on it. But I think, you know, there are practical things, you know, around public way and that sort of experience we have, we can offer as suggestion and opinion for, which we already have to some extent, but I think we can continue to comment on, but as far as adopting formally, I don't think, that's what I'm hearing from my colleagues, and I also have that opinion as well. But nonetheless, I think there's, there's still positive action that can be taken in regard to sort of continue to refine this and prepare it, and then have it ready for when the council, you know, takes office.
I mean, we're sort of meddling in your business now, but does it make sense for the Public Art Commission to have a document that says, you know, "Our, we want to encourage public art on private property or privately donated to public, and we will work with you, and here's some guidance and what we're looking for, and if you do these things and you like it, maybe we'll go to the permeating authority hand in hand with you and advocate for your project." I mean, you have a little bit of leverage to provide some guidance just at the level of the Public Art Commission. That, I don't think, treads on the more formal public way approvals. Just my idea.
Okay, I see the issues that you're raising. I mean, the, I mean, the hope was that to have something, to hand to developers when they approach the town. In case you hadn't noticed, Amherst is interested in public art. If your intention is to include public art, here's how it would be handled if it was on private property or on, and if it was on the public way. So it's part of the package or whatever Amherst gives to developers. So the, what you're saying, suggesting is just being a resource, of course, we could...
For now.
Yeah, for now, do our best to do that. And we do that already.
This is one of those, with the transition provisions of the Charter, we're a little bit handcuffed in some ways. And, you know, it does impede action that would likely be considered non-controversial in a lot of ways, but we can't presume that, and so I think we have to be...
I do understand that, and I understand that, that's in the Charter. But it would be helpful if you think that this document needs, has issues and problems that would, that need to be addressed regardless. It would be helpful to know what they were, so that, as you said, we could be prepared to make a better presentation to the new council when it, when it does materialize.
We're not going to write anything that tells you that, we just told you. And so that's, that's not something we have the time or bandwidth to sit and analyze and write a memo about. So I think if you watch the tape again, just think about the spirit of the things that we talked about, I think that you will accomplish what you're talking about doing. And of course, as we've said informally, you can already have these conversations with developers, and it is this awkward space where we're not going to write a memo explaining all the different things we'd like you to change about this, because we're just...
Just to add, Mr. Ray, I'm always continuing to be impressed with how committed you are to public art, and so I, I don't think this is like the bad thing, just because we threw a bunch of criticisms at it. I think it's getting a conversation going, and I think you have the best intentions for public art, and you've worked tirelessly for many years, and you've come to us with bunches of things. So I just want to appreciate your commitment to this, and it wasn't a bad thing to bring to us, it's just we're struggling, and it's the first time we've had a chance to discuss them. So I want to encourage you to keep working on whatever version is appropriate for these times, and I care about this stuff a lot, and appreciate that.
I think additionally, individually, we can offer suggestion to this, if we find time, if we have, you know, I'm not sure there's going to be a lot of that, but if...
Something, a light bulb goes off at 3:00 in the morning, or send you an email, I promise I will.
I think I can be advantageous, so if there's something, you know, a month from now that one of us thinks of, or some, you know, piece that would be beneficial to you, then, you know, we're likely to offer that to you as a suggestion.
See something in planning magazines about public art and it's relevant.
Right, so I think that, that may be the case. And so I would, I'd also say to my colleagues, if you do think of something, you can reach here with, with the Public Art Commission, because that'll just help, you know, help refine it and keep it moving forward.
Well, we will be drafting, as we did with this, it would be important, as North Hampton has found, to have a gift policy placed too, or a protocol of some kind, procedures, so that we're not embarrassed by having to turn down a substantial gift, because we don't know how to handle it. So we'll be working on that for the new council as well.
And I don't think we necessarily would be opposed to seeing that and offering you critique as well, but, you know, you can come and get used anytime you like.
Oh, you can appear.
Thank you, thank you very much. So next on our agenda, you know, review or take positions on any sort of innovative articles. I'm not sure there are any that we take any action on receiving or review that I know of that we're prepared to, Mr. Steinberg.
I just want to point out that we've heard rumor that somebody may make a motion to reopen one of the enterprise fund budgets for the purpose of amending the budget, and I'm going to assume as the speaker on budget items that this is equivalent to others, and that since the budget was passed as we recommended it, we do not have the reconsideration.
You want to take a motion? I guess I have a motion, I just want to stay.
That just escaped, and somebody wanted to go otherwise.
I don't want to interrupt that, but similarly rumors that there will be an amendment to the possible amendment to capital budget around, so I don't know if we want to start talking about that. Assuming since we approved the capital budget, that we would not approve an amendment.
I think so, I think we could speculate on leaving.
Yeah, I know, I know. Especially on budget, I think we're pretty clear, we supported this budget, and so to accept any amendment, we'd be not supporting our own actions. Also, with some emergency, you know, lava flow, we have to spend money, I don't think I can.
Right.
Do we have a 48-hour notice?
I, I think there was something.
The license?
Well, we have a license, so why don't we do that? So someone like to make the motion on the, on the one license we have, if we figure that, we'll do it.
Topic to approve the application of top of the campus incorporated for a special license to serve wine and malt beverages at the county building atrium on May 15, 2018, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., Kimberlin Callister Board Member.
Second, so a motion is second. Is there further discussion? Hearing the unvocals in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, session endless. And so topic's not anticipated in the last few hours.
Yes, so a petitioner brought in a number of signatures, not the requisite number for a, requesting a special town meeting for one article to address campaign planning reform. There aren't enough articles to require it, their question, you know, the Charter gives you guidance in terms of what you can call a special town meeting for, so I just want to alert you to that. In fact, the town council will be rendering a written opinion as to provide some guidance, because this might not be the only special town meeting request you get, you will get others, wouldn't surprise me, and so having some, using this as an example with a hard request, and having the town council, town attorney put that into context for you would provide you some guidance.
So, follow up, I really appreciate that, because we had been warned by the petitioner that this might happen at some point, but to follow up on the very first part, when he said, "I had been given the impression from the email that they simply hadn't certified enough signatures yet." Are we saying that in fact they didn't even submit enough signatures to force a special?
It's supposed to be 200.
Right, it's 200, and they just didn't. Was there an explanation for that? As to like, like, we didn't get enough, or we thought you'd call it anyway, or, I mean, that's what I don't understand, because it's 100, like if we'd already called one, they only would have had to get 100. But to force one and put the item off, I mean, to force one for their own thing, they needed 200, assuming we were even a town anymore, that is bound by that master.
I don't know if they had an explanation for why they tried to...
But they didn't offer it to you, is what, that's what I was looking for.
And just to be clear, two weeks ago, I had, when this, my first heard this, I did communicate with the petitioner saying, "This could be a concern in terms of whether there's a legitimate option available for the Select Board."
Thank you. So what, oh, I'm sorry. What I, I was expecting, the petition would come in with a certified number of signatures, and then I still had a legal question about that, but given that it doesn't even meet that threshold, it would be, you know, we can only figure out what's implied, because there wasn't a cover or a statement, that if we wanted to act on it, we could, or we could also have a motion, just saying we declined to act on, on calling special, you know, just declined to act on it.
So I was just trying to get it out to you as soon as possible, because you're meeting, you're seeing the same people who are signing in, and I didn't want you to be caught off guard that it was active.
Oh, no, that was good.
Normally, we wouldn't wait until we had the requisite number of certified registered voters signed, which we don't, and then that would be presented to you, but if someone brought in one...
So declining might be premature. We still don't know, and maybe this will be in the written guidance, if the requisite number of signatures, certified signatures were turned in, under the rules that we're under now, would we have to hold a special, or can we say no? If, assuming that there were the 200s.
Right, so it doesn't even get to your agenda until there's a requisite number of signatures. So if they get the requisite number of signatures, that triggers something, and it triggers that they have the ability, under state law, to ask you to hold a special town meeting, and you have to weigh that in terms of the Charter, which is also state law passed by the legislature, passed by under the rule act. And you, and that, the transition provisions gives the Select Board the decision-making to make this. And what I think the town council will tell you is that you, you know, these are both state laws, there is a, this is a more, the Charter is a more specific law, and that would trump the general state law.
And so we would get that kind of...
And you would have to make that call, you would decide, is this something that is not ready to delay?
So it's kind of an FYI, so we know, because it just came in 48-hour, and we can know about it, but we're not ready to act, but more to unfold, and we don't have a message.
We don't know if it's, we don't know if it's real yet, because we don't have the requisite number of signatures scanned, then you don't, if it does become real, then you would say, well, what is, what are our options? scanned. If it does become real, then you'll say, well, what are our options here?
Okay, we don't have to do that now.
In terms of our options in that memo, I'm not quite sure how to phrase this because it is a slightly different situation. But it is something I've been saying a lot ever since we started working on Maryland, I suppose, is how do people sue us for something like this? And so if we make the determination, and I'm not being, I mean, I know it sounds a little funny, but, and we get sued all the time and that's fine, but this is such an unusual situation with the transition period. And so if people are unhappy, if we make a decision either way, either to accept it and then people who say, my goodness, you shouldn't have done that because you have a charter. And the people who say, oh, yes, you should have, but, like, who gets to say, is that just, I want town council to come back and say, Select Board has this authority to make this decision and that's the final place that people can do it unless they come up with some super creative way of suing us that nobody's thought of before. Like, there's not an obvious path. Like Land Court is an obvious path for certain things.
Well, someone can sue you at any moment.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying. But there's no obvious, like Land Court is an obvious path for certain kinds of things. I mean, you don't file anything in Land Court. You file certain kinds of things in Land Court. So there's no obvious court, there's no obvious court of appeal, is what I'm saying for this beyond us.
Well, no, there is. If we take an administrative action and we follow our procedures, you cannot take people's right away, oh, you can't remove the ability to go to the courts. I don't know which court.
No, that's not what I'm asking to do. I'm asking it to be clarified if there is a known court of appeals for this sort of decision or if it's just the generic ether, people will find a way to go to the courts. But I don't believe there's a known court of appeals for this sort of thing per se, like Land Court is for certain kinds of socials.
If you're relying on the charter, which is what we do, there is no appeal process outlined in the charter. So they would claim they would appeal just
Someplace.
Superior court or whatever court.
Right. That's what I'm making sure we hadn't missed something on that. There is no
Their lawyer would tell them in which court.
Thank you. So can we make a couple of date announcements before we get out of here?
Absolutely. Well, there's a couple of things I wanted to
Okay. Why don't you do yours first and I'll say
Well, mine's going to be, it's dates announcing when things are happening to it now.
All right. When things are happening. So Race Amity Day is coming up on Sunday, June 10th, which is a week after the Human Rights Heroes Awards. That's at Mill River. Race Amity Day is at UU. We're going to be asked to read the proclamation, Mr. Slaughter, if he's available. We'll be doing that. And I've asked staff to follow up because honestly, I couldn't remember if we'd already done the proclamation for this year, but I kind of thought not. But we're following up on town meetings action associated with that. And the other one was associated with the item on our desk tonight since now one is such a new issue for us in Amherst, even though we've been working on it a long time, to announce that the entire community is invited to the grand opening event for what has previously been known as GTI and will now be known as RISE on Meadow Street. And that they should attend that on May 16th from noon to 3:00 p.m. Open House with Ruben Kettin at 1:00. Obviously, we'll not be serving customers at that point, but they will be doing tours and giving discussion about what their plans are. And they're planning to start serving patients a week later on the 21st. So I thought that was good, that it's not just a little small thing that they're doing, but they're saying the entire community can come because this will be our first one.
So speaking of dates, so in our packet tonight, it's a calendar that looks like this with lots of colors. However, there are a couple of changes that I want to alert you to. Not on the, what I would say to the front side, we start with January 2018, but on the back side, it would be in
Oh, attached to that letter at the back of that.
Right.
Just before this.
Not in my copy.
That's a bad invitation.
We're going to give you new ones anyway, but I want to point out to people that in July, instead of the 2nd, that's highlighted in yellow, it should be the 9th. In October, and we had picked the 1st, the 15th and the 29th as meeting dates, but the 22nd, if the 1st is not appropriate, given the holiday that's there. So we've researched that, I need to ask Mr. Wall. And I think those were the only two that's right. Okay. So those two edits. So we'll, but along with that is just look those dates over. And I know this couple has reached out to us for our summer plans. I'm personally still figuring those out, but we will need to do that. And so probably if it's known that some of these dates are really awful, make sure to let me know and then we can potentially have a motion in our next meeting where we sort of set these dates and then modify them as we learn more. But just want to put that calendar out there for folks so that they can look it over. Mr. Wall?
It says Columbus Day here.
What's that?
It says Columbus Day on the 8th.
That's right. It should say Indigenous Peoples' Day.
If it's a town holiday, it's Indigenous Peoples' Day.
That's right.
I'm confused by what we have in our packet. So somehow things happened. I didn't get that one. Fine. I'll get it later. But we have one dated May 2017 to September 27?
That was just for reference of
To show us what we did last summer. So last summer as a reference. And so are we going to have a packet delivery this Friday for Monday's packet since we don't have a bunch of stuff here for Monday's meeting? And so if we are, then it would be great to have that reprinted with that date correction, that nice colorful one. And if we aren't, well, then maybe somebody can bring an extra copy on Monday.
Right. Yes. So I think at this point, unless there's something anyone else needs to mention, we'll go into recess for the evening and return later. But we'll go to recess and we'll get ourselves into the meeting. Thank you all.